All right. We'll call the meeting to order. So today is Tuesday, January 7th, 2025. It is 6:05 PM. We are here. It's town council meeting. Oh.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So we'll do roll call, see who is here this evening. Councilor Egan.
Here.
Councilor Pillsbury.
Present.
Councilor Pilch.
Here.
Councilor Brown.
Here.
Councilor Smith.
Present.
And Councilor Benoit is present. Councilor Lawrence has excused for travel this evening. All right. Our third order of business is to waive the reading and accept the meeting minutes from our last meeting, 24-24, as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
I have to abstain. I wasn't here.
Whoop's that?
I have to abstain. I wasn't here.
Okay. Is Chris taking notes today?
Chris is taking notes. She'll be here as soon as she can.
Okay. I'm just gonna make note of that. All right. Next, we have announcements. I have a few. So the fit-up committee awarded three new business grants in December. So we made one $10,000 grant to MAID, which stands for Makers, Artists, Designers, Entrepreneurs, to install a coffee/wine bar at their new location at 31 Main Street. We awarded $10K to, or $10,000, to the Brewster House at 180 Main Street to transform an underutilized space into a sauna and cold plunge. We also awarded $6,900 to the Color Me Salon at 475 Route 1 to install new flooring and to address code issues. 2024 dog licenses have expired. A $25 per-dog late fee starts February 1st. You must bring a copy of the dog's rabies certificate this year. Online licensing is still available at main.gov, but please note the fee for this service has increased this year. The short-term rental registration renewal period is now open. Registration forms are available on our website. There is also a link to pay the $100 renewal fee online. Any other announcements from councilors? Go ahead.
Well, I have two, what I would call PSAs, public service announcements. Two comments that involve safety. One is fire safety, general fire safety, and one is health safety. Yesterday, I met with our fire chief, Chief Bernard, and he gave me a full tour of the fire department, fire station. It was a part of my continuing education as a new counselor. During the tour, we touched on the topic of home safety and discussed the need for keeping our smoke and carbon monoxide detectors in good working order. So to do so is, we need to replace the batteries from time to time. Now is a good time for you all to check them, and here are a few tips. Monthly testing is a great idea, and it's easy. Lithium batteries can now be used and last a long time. And if you're replacing a smoke or carbon monoxide detector, be sure that it has a UL underwriter laboratory rating to assure that it will work well. This is very important. Chief Bernard reports to me that from time to time, the department has called to homes where the alarms prove to be false, and they're usually discovers that the units are not UL certified. And a little more personal note, I want to delve into the field of health and take a minute to note that colonoscopies save lives. For folks with average risk factors, it is currently recommended that one should have their first colonoscopy at age 45. In the year 2004, the recommended age was 50. Sadly, that was the year that one of my brother-in-laws, who was 47 years old at the time, discovered that he had colon cancer. Though he fought valiantly, he lost the battle. He simply did not know that he had risk factors, elevated risk factors. Had that recommended age been 45, as it is now, instead of 50, he might be alive today to see his two grandchildren born since he died. Current screening reveals that colon cancer is increasingly occurring at younger ages. And though the recommended age for one's first colonoscopy is 45, I'm here to make a prudent suggestion that people lobby their doctors, their insurance company, to have one at age 40. If you have identifiable risk factors, the case is easy to make. If you don't have a sense of your risk factors, err on the side of safety. Help get the word out to those you know and love who are 40 and older. Colonoscopies save lives. Let's normalize this discussion and not let fear or embarrassment get in the way.
Can I, I didn't think we'd be talking about this tonight, but I will echo that. And I will also say that it is not as bad as people think it's going to be. It really is doable.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Councilor Brown. Any other announcements? So we'll move on to our fifth order of business, which is information exchange. Time to share news, updates from committees, meetings with constituents and similar. Is there anything from the council? Go ahead, Councilor Egan.
This morning, I attended the monthly board meeting of FEDC and the liaison to FEDC, and it was great to see those folks again. They're active and engaged and very enthusiastic about promoting business opportunities and seeing growth in our community. Brett also attended, Brett Richardson, and provided a summary of the Dog Bone Report, which is on our agenda for later this evening, which was, the news of that and ensuing discussion was robust and warmly received. And I think we have really solid support from FEDC for that particular item that we'll be discussing later on this evening. So I'd like to continue to have some visibility with FEDC here at the council. So from time to time, maybe once a month, not sure of the frequency, I'll probably be inviting them to come just give a five-minute update during this segment of the agenda on, about once a month, maybe, maybe not that often if there's nothing to update. But that board is engaged in just a spider web of different activities in our community, so it'd be good for us to have back and forth with them.
I know Toni came recently and discussed her recent trip to New York City where she talked about Freeport, and I think in tandem, it would be great to have written updates too, to revisit over time. So I would make that a suggestion as well.
Sure.
Other information for exchange? Okay. I have one as well. So our Social Racial Equity Committee did sunset on December 31st after some discussion about moving forward. That was the decision of the committee. I do want to thank them for four years of work. Most recently, they assisted with the development of the graffiti policy for town, which I think was a huge step in solving a problem we saw in town. I also would like to mention that they did offer their expertise and to talk about their experience as this committee if the need does arise in the future. So just want to say thank you for the time and service of that group, and onward we go. Okay. So if no other information exchange will be happening, we'll move over to our sixth order of business, which is the Town Manager's Report.
I have a few things tonight. I wanted to let council know that staff has been continuing to support the comp plan process. We've worked with North Star Planning, our consultant for this project, to add an additional public meeting, which is scheduled to happen on March 18th. Planning Board will be putting in a lot of work over the next three months to prepare for this meeting. So the goal is to bring the strategies, the opportunities, the strategies, back to the community for input. And also, they're finalizing the draft inventory chapters. So we're on, we are on target to end this project as expected, which is great. I think Caroline and Brett and Kyle have been doing a great job kind of keeping us on track with that. A big thanks goes out to all of the boards and committees for the feedback that they gave into the draft inventory chapters. But Caroline really wanted to make sure that we called out FSAB and Connect Freeport because they gave incredibly detailed reports back, which really helped make sure we had the right information. I'm excited to report that we have a retooled project for front, beautification project for the front of Town Hall. It will be going in front of Municipal Facilities Committee next week for some feedback. Ultimately, that will come to council when it's, when Municipal Facilities is comfortable to, for me to get permission to take it back to Project Review Board for approval. I'm, Albert did a great job getting the effect that I think was wanted through the downtown visioning process at a fraction of the cost. So we really looked at what, what would meet the need without kind of going overboard. And people will be excited to see the repurposing of old granite that we have, which is kind of cool. We did get, as I think I let council know, the Department of Community and Economic Development Housing's grant, which was the grant to help us retool ordinances and get promotional material out once we do that, to help people navigate how to put accessory dwelling units on their property or develop in Freeport. We have received a conditional award of $50,000. Thank you, Representative Sacks, for helping us actually move that along. It kind of got stuck in review for a very, very, very long time. Because it was stuck in review for so long, staff had begun to move forward with some of the work that we had proposed as part of the grant. And because of that, they're allowing us to now come back and work with them to retool our scope. So there's going to be a little bit of a scope change. Ultimately, we're trying to get all of the priorities that council is already aware of done, just swapping the work that we've already done for new work. I think council talked about, but I wasn't, I didn't go back and look at the tape, but just to make sure everybody's aware that Janice Fogg did retire as the crossing guard. And we were so excited today to hire a replacement. That is such a hard position to fill, that it is really, we were amazed that we were able to find somebody else. We've hired a new patrol officer, Derek Bateman, who we received word last week, got into the January Maine Criminal Justice Academy class, so we're really excited. He'll be going away for 18 weeks, but then we'll be back to finish field training and be on, on shift. Heather Shirley, who is, who was a part-time clerk, has been promoted to the Youth Services' Assistant Librarian at, at the library. Debbie Reader gave us notice of her intent to retire at the end of February after 30 years, more than 30 years of service to the town of Freeport. And Jerry Pino was a fire captain who has decided to leave for a deputy chief position with the city of Lewiston. He plans to stay on as a per diem. I'm not sure where all the hours will come from, but we appreciate it. That leaves us with an open assistant planner position, an equipment operator, and a laborer position at Public Works, one police officer, and we will be advertising for a part-time library circulation clerk to fill in for where Heather was. We have in process, in the interview process, a fire captain, firefighter, paramedic, full-time. I'm excited. Those were internal postings, so we had plenty of folks who are qualified for both of those positions that are currently on staff, which is a really cool position to be in. And a buildings and ground position that I think we made a conditional offer this morning on. I am disappointed to report that our community response coordinator position, which is the GA, Crisis Intervention, we had a great candidate offered the position, and they decided that for right now, it was, in her words, "It was really hard." But, we were like, "We wish we made it harder." But, so we're going to pull the group back together to talk about next steps for that position, and it will probably go out a little bit retooled. And property tax rebate, letters are going out next week to people, so you might start hearing about that. We, we rolled out the Maine Paid Family Leave Act assessment, so that's the 1% assessment that all employers over a certain 15 people have to assess people for. We're doing it, a half a percent is owed by the, is taken from the employee and a half a percent from the town to pay into that. The, we have to, the town has to pay at least a half percent. And when we negotiated the labor contract, we were forward-thinking and put it in as split, so we're carrying that through for everybody on staff. And staff is embarking on rolling out town-wide evaluations. We've got training coming on our new tools with department heads. And next, Courtney is embarking or continuing her review of all of the job descriptions. So we're, we're working our way through.
Any questions for Sophie? We will move on to our seventh order of business, which is public comment, limited to comments on, that are not on the agenda, with a limit of three minutes, we ask respectfully. If anyone would like to make a public comment, please step up.
Danny, one ship, 16 Pro Road. I sent emails to you guys and PDFs on this fire truck. I hope you reviewed it. Just shows that there is a problem with this truck and the harshness of what we do on our roads, which means if you're going to buy it anyways, we need solutions to keep this truck in good shape. There's coatings that you can put on it, washing them. I mean, you look at some of these town trucks running around, they're horrible. There's mounds of sand on frame, salt all over them, they're not being taken care of. I hope this doesn't happen with this truck, because the average life span on this truck is only 17 years. Now, there's even something you guys should be able to do, I believe, which is, we have beer companies making beer. Their waste could be mixed with what we put on our roads, which will cut down the uses of salt, which eats our vehicles. It's called beer brine. They have beet brine, beer brine, molasses brine. All this stuff holds the salt to the snow, to the roads before the storm hits will help everything all the way around. It's being done right now in Bengal, and they're having really good luck with it. So I actually hope you guys will look into that to help better even our waterways, because it's killing fish. It's right online. It is right there.
I can.
So, thank you.
Sounds like Sophie has a connection that she can reach out to over there. That's fascinating. I didn't know that. Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak for public comment?
Peter Enzwinie, South Report. So at some point in the future, I'll resume my assessment component, but for today, I'd like to ask you the question about, when I look at the CIP budget, it looks like there's two fire trucks identified for $1,008,000. So that's a little confusing, because I thought the fire truck that we were talking about was one truck. So the CIP shows two elements. So I just, you know, would like some clarification if possible. Thank you.
Hello, Joe Meliacho and Freeport. On a similar topic that was just mentioned, I'm still completely confused on, and another I talked to seemed to be the same way, and I just heard it again. We said we would borrow up to 1.5 million, not over 1.5 million, maybe less than 1.5 million. Could, you guys may be in discussion period or when it comes up before we break today. Explain just how much we have in the reserve for that. I heard something like 800. And then where, so that, does that mean we only need to borrow 700? Who will make that decision and when that will be made? I also want to thank the council for the workshop you held earlier in December. I did watch that with the assessor. That was very helpful, and I really appreciate the answer and the call on that. And I think you can, the clock needs to start. I'll give myself a minute. The, yeah, always start the clock when I show up, okay? Just saying. The, the other thing was, I wanted to say thank you for that, and I hope you then understand those in attendance at that workshop, how complex this really is, and how small little errors in foundational numbers that may not be correct lead to this garbage-in, garbage-out thing. You heard that, in assessing in general, not just in Maine. So you heard things about mass, mathematical assessments and individual property assessments. I still contend that you need to have another session, maybe with the assessor, going into budget season, to make sure the assessor has the resources to go through and start chipping away at the individual properties. I think I've already been up here a few times saying, just even in my neighborhood, I can identify properties that are assessed at half the value, and it takes two years to catch up. And so I would add that, Town Manager, to the priorities list for the very good idea of a financial, finance committee that you're setting up that'll allow kind of people like me and others to come and have those discussions. But I can tell you that what I heard from that, that session was that our ratios on standard deviation are 13. The state, I thought I heard, allows 15. I heard that, you know, we're at only 73% right now, which is different than I heard when I met with the assessor, or 78%, I think. No, please correct me. I was looking at the sheet. We're at 78%. We want to be at 91, 92 average. But again, that doesn't matter if the standard deviation's in there. There's people getting taxed at higher values than they should be when compared to other people. So please add that to the priority on the finance committee, and that was a big list then, or whoever said that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Any other public comment? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm Jim Hughes. I live in Sparkove. I saw in the newsletter how members of the town council are appointed to various other activities in town to kind of oversee them. And I was disappointed to see that the appeals board has nobody overseeing them. And from what I can see, what the appeals board is doing, they're not following the ordinance, which is passed by the councilors. They're going on their own sweet way wherever they want. Anyways, I think somebody, one of you ought to be watching that appeals board and get them squared away. Thank you.
Thank you for that observation. I will say that it's by statute, we're actually not able to oversee the appeals board. We're actually, by statute, we're not allowed, we're not able to oversee the appeals board, because they're quasi...
You can go see what they're doing.
Definitely, we can do that. Thank you.
And if you see them not being in your ordinance, you can remove them.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. Any other public comment? So we will move on to our eighth order of business, which is to take action on the following items. So action item 01-25 is to adopt the consent agenda as proposed. We do have some donations for heating, fire, and library, and that looks like that's about it. Any discussion? So Councilor Egan, could you read the be ordered?
Be it ordered that the January 7th, 2025 consent agenda be adopted.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Moving on to item 02-25, to consider action relative to amendments to Chapter III Fiscal Year, to establish a fiscal year. Councilor Pillsbury, can you read the be ordered, or be remained? Oh, wait, it's a public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing first. So one day I'll get this.
And you'll get me to give you a brief...
Okay. So we'll open the public hearing, and Sophie, you have some information to share.
Yeah, I just want to quickly review for folks who maybe have not looked at this. This is a repeal and replacement. Chapter III currently is called Fiscal Year. We're going to give it some actions. We're going to call it establishing a fiscal year. It's about putting this into the format that we're now using to have standardization among all of our ordinances. And if you look at the old one, it speaks to the school, which we no longer have as a town department. And so this just seeks in three quick paragraphs to establish the fiscal year, which is required under the charter. You must, if you're going to have a July 1 fiscal year, you had to establish it by ordinance. It recapitulates the authority given to you by the charter to do this. And then it simply says that effective July 1, 1977, our municipal fiscal year will be July 1st through June 30th of the following year. That's it. Very confusing.
And this is a public hearing because we're changing the charter?
Uh, changing the ordinance.
The quote, okay.
So this is a public hearing if anyone would like to speak.
Peter Enzwinie, South Report. So the real bottom line of this change is to fix the documentation, because I believe we've been doing this calendar. So we've been wrong all these years. Okay.
No, you've been, you've been completely right. It's about the fact that we're no longer, the school department is no longer part of the town, so our ordinance shouldn't really speak to the school department. And also, we're trying to bring some uniformity to ordinances so that when we put them online, we'll actually be able to search them as one document, and it will be easy for people to use. And unfortunately, the state says anytime we change, anytime we change language in an ordinance, council has to go through this process.
If I had known this before, I could have had all kinds of fun. Thank you.
All right.
So is becomes established. First line, fiscal year is, and now we're going to say fiscal year is established?
Um, we, I would still use the same... Um, we, I would still use the same, the purpose of this article is to establish.
Okay.
Any other comment?
Still lost on that.
Okay, we'll go ahead and we'll close the public hearing. Councilor Pillsbury, please read the be ordained.
Sure. Be it ordained that amendments to Freeport Code of Ordinances, Chapter 3, established in a fiscal year, be approved.
Second.
Any other discussion from the counselors? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item 03-25, to consider action relative to amendments to Chapter 21, Freeport zoning ordinance. So we will go ahead and open the public hearing, and I believe Caroline will be providing some background, and she's on Zoom.
Yep.
Over to you, Caroline.
Thanks, Joanna. Can you hear me okay?
Yep. Yeah.
Okay, perfect. So this was an applicant-driven agenda item by East State Family Holdings. They own the desert of Maine. They came forward and requested that the planning board consider an amendment to the zoning ordinance definition of a campground. A handful of years ago, they came forward and amended the definition to add a provision to allow cabins. Along with that, one of the restrictions was that they be seasonal for use between May and November 1st. They are now back looking to strike that. So they could have cabins, they could be used year-round, just like tents or other things, but they would keep the provisions that they still be transient for no than, no more than 14 days for recreational use, and they won't have cooking facilities. And I believe Doug might be present if you have additional questions for him tonight.
So the public hearing is open. If anyone would like to provide comment? Go ahead.
Joe Meliacho, Freeport. I support things like this to help people grow their business. It's a traditional fit for a Freeport. Anything tourism and gimmicky, give them all right. We like it. And, but my only thing I was asking is, I've been here speaking before about the short-term rental ordinances, and this to me seems like, I guess if you have a campground, you wouldn't have to, you could do all of the rentals you wanted on Airbnb or whatever, but you wouldn't have to register. Right? Yeah, that's a question. And just think about it in that context, you know? I mean, we got a number of campgrounds. I guess we fit them into zoning, and if folks are okay with campgrounds doing what private business, private property owners can't do without registering and paying $100, then that's the way it is. But just think about it in that context. Thanks. I support it.
Any other public comment? Okay. Would you like to respond?
I was just, the public was done.
Okay.
Want to say what you were going to say?
So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And then Councilor Piltch, could you read the be ordained?
Yes. Be it ordained that amendments to Chapter 21, Freeport zoning ordinance, to amend the definition of campground in Section 104 definitions, to remove the requirement for rental cabins in campgrounds to be seasonal, be approved.
I'll second that. All right, open for council discussion. Any thoughts? Councilor Egan?
I think the action that we're taking here is just to remove the word seasonal, so it's not changing the activity or the use that the property owner has intended and has been carrying out for years. So I believe that's all what we're doing here, is to allow that activity that happens in May through whenever to now happen in the middle of the winter as well.
Yeah, and I would also say that campgrounds have gone through the same, a site plan review process, have performance standards that they have to meet. The other thing that my very capable assistant town manager has texted to me is that these are not dwelling units.
Right.
That, that in order to be, when you put the rentals together, they're not dwelling units. They're places to sleep.
And that's a distinction between a short-term rental and a campground unit.
Yep.
And I think as, as Joe was pointing out, the difference is the zoning and the approved use. So in a place where a campground is in approved use and the campground has gone through all the certification to be a place of business, that's different than a residential area where there, a campground may not be in approved use. An individual dwelling place that is, can then be certified at, or registered as a short-term rental could be allowed. But, but yeah, different, different business requirements.
A question for the applicant. It's an easy one. Fully support the amendment. I think it should be an easy one. But is there demand between December and April for people to come and stay in the cabins?
Doug Heaston, owner of the desert of Maine. Not clear, but we do get, we do get emails from time to time, people visiting family that don't want to stay with their relatives, but they want to visit, you know, things like that. We also think it's a pretty magical place when it snows for like a retreat. So there's much less demand than the sun, than our peak season, but enough to make it worth our while, we think.
Awesome. I hope it works out.
Yeah.
And we need some snow.
Yes.
We can ski hut to hut.
Any other questions or thoughts? Thank you for your effort on making that a, a great destination. I've loved visiting myself, so thank you. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to item 04-25. So this is to set a public hearing to discuss amendments to Chapter 21, Freeport zoning ordinance. Councilor Brown?
Be it ordered that a public hea, hearing be set for January 21st, 2025, at the town council meeting, starting at 6:00 PM in Town Council Chambers, 30 Main Street, to discuss proposed amendments to the Freeport zoning ordinance regarding exempting multifamily structures from subdivision review per Title 30-A MRS, Section 4402, Section 6. Clarifying density standards in the commercial 4, C4 district. Updating site plan review submission and criteria standards. Non-substantive text amendments related to updating nomenclatures and updating quantities of project review board submission materials.
Second.
That was quite the mouthful. Thank you. And then I believe Caroline, you will also provide some context for this item?
Yeah, so I'm going to go ahead and try to screen share. It's been a while since I have done this. Can you see the PowerPoint?
No, not yet.
Oh, Sophie, it's because it's not turned on?
Oh, there you go. You should be all set.
Now?
No.
Okay. Let's see if cable TV can pull it up. I will start going through it, worst case you can see this beautiful presentation at the next meeting. So if it's okay, I was just going to walk through both items with you at one time because they are related.
And just for context, that is the next item. So this item and the next item are very related.
Yeah, there's a lot of overlap. So the thing I think you'll like most about this item is it attacks multiple planning board work plan items. So we're accomplishing five different planning board to-do tasks with these changes tonight. So first, we always do general cleanup, things like, you know, correcting names and references. We are going to be changing potentially the review process when you have a multiple family dwelling. It will reflect changes for the PRB to make, project review board to make switches to go to all digital submissions. There's some legal cleanup in shoreline zoning definitions, and those two, last two items only pertain to the subdivision ordinance, where the first three pertain to zoning and subdivision. So just a quick overview of the changes. So general cleanup, like I said, is titles, terminology, you know, correcting staff titles. And in the subdivision, there was a lot of references to outside documents, which we needed to update. As I said, the PRB is going to go digital, but because we are a municipality, we still have public record retention requirements, which are still with paper. And we do still have residents that like to come in and look at paper. So we'll be going digital, but we'll still be requiring three copies. And then we had some changes that we needed to make to modernize our recording requirements because we used to require mile hours for the registry, but that's no longer accepted. We did get some legal guidance on some changes that were needed to the subdivision ordinance. A lot of that has been done, but we continue to work on our ordinances in different phases. So you will see some additional cleanup, including some more legal cleanup to that ordinance at a later date. And then it was brought to our attention by a resident that when we updated the shoreline zoning definitions, a few years ago, we inadvertently missed updating the related definitions in the subdivision ordinance. So those are just mirroring relevant definitions to the existing definitions that we have on the books in the shoreline zoning ordinance. Questions before we go on to the, probably the most technical change here tonight?
I think you can go ahead.
Okay, perfect. So I think the biggest change before you for consideration with these amendments is a change that is allowed under state law. So currently in Freeport, when you have a multiple family dwelling, three or more units within a single structure, you have to go through most likely subdivision and site plan review. The state of Maine allows the municipal reviewing authority, which in the case of subdivision is the project review board, to make a finding that the town has site plan standards that reflect certain criteria, and that's demonstrating that we have adequate standards for stormwater management, sewage disposal, water supply, and vehicular access. We can have other standards, that's fine, but those are the four that to make this finding, the state requires that we meet. So because the way we're split here, the project review board had to make the finding, but the planning board had to draft the language. So in reality, both boards have looked at this and come to the same conclusion, but the project review board was the one that officially needed to make that. We do have the ability to make this finding for specific situations. So for example, we could make it apply to one structure or multiple structures or other scenarios that the board wanted to consider. In Freeport, this change to exempt multifamily from subdivision and site plan will allow for a shortened and more streamlined review process, and it will also eliminate some duplications that we had in the process. So the language before you, although the finding was made, the boards did have discussion on cases this change should apply. So the language before you would exempt multifamily dwelling from review, and a multifamily dwelling may also include an affordable housing development. When it's in a single structure and it's not proposing to create a new road for frontage purposes. So you know, this would most likely be a single building going on an existing road. They decided that, given there are standards going beyond a single structure, or when they're creating a new road, wasn't appropriate at this point in time, just due to the standards we have in place. Because the two processes are slightly different, there were two standards that the planning board felt that we needed to put some standards in site plan review. So you may have noticed that there's a new standard that was added for demonstrating financial and technical capacity. You actually only have to do that in subdivision today. So this change would require for site plan applications, and this would apply to all site plan applications. And then finally, the planning board, project review board, under a site plan review, holding a public hearing is optional. Well, they always take public comment. A public hearing would be a formal ad, include a formal ad in the newspaper. So this adds a requirement that if the project review board were going to review an application for a multiple family dwelling, that they would be required to have a public hearing. And again, that would apply to that new use of affordable housing development. And then the only thing we want to note with this is that although the board is making this change, they decided they were going to keep densities as they are. So density in and outside of subdivision can be slightly different. We do have some village mixed use where multifamily in subdivision has a slightly lower density, but subdivision has a requirement of calculating a net residential acreage, where you take out buildable areas from the overall land area. So this could result in a change in density calculations, but this is not something the planning board got into changing at this point in time. There is, with net residential acreage, a level of unknown because of all the variations in land and the environmental features. So that's a snapshot of what's before you tonight. Happy to answer questions on either item.
We're sitting a public hearing.
Caroline, just one question, something you mentioned I want to clarify. You mentioned that there's a financial capacity discussion requirement, and I thought you said that that would now be required of all site plan submissions?
Yeah, so the standard drafted by the planning board makes that a performance standard under Section 602. And typically, what a letter of financial capacity is, is as a letter from a financial institution indicating that, you know, the person or the individual party that applied, the applicant, has the financial capacity to construct the project as proposed. It's not like an actual line of credit, it's just kind of more of like a letter of good standing from the financial institution.
So even if it's a site plan review that's not for a subdivision, if it's just a business expanding their, their building, they would need, now need to do that where they didn't need to before?
Yeah, I don't see it really as creating a new barrier, though, because ultimately we always require them to post a performance guarantee. So they are going to have to demonstrate it, you know, typically as a condition of approval. But yes, it is a new requirement that other projects would not have always been submitting upfront.
Okay. Thanks.
Plenty of time to mull this over before the public hearing. You said it. Any other thoughts or question in the meantime? So again, this is for sitting a public hearing. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you, Caroline. And so related is the next item, 05-25. Councilor Smith?
Be it ordered that a public hearing be set for January 21st, 2025, at the town council meeting, starting at 6:00 PM in Town Council Chambers, 30 Main Street, to discuss proposed amendments to the Freeport subdivision ordinance regarding exempting multifamily structures from subdivision review per Title 30-A MRS, Section 4402, Section 6. Non-substantive text amendments such as updating referenced documents, updating definitions, amendments per the town attorney's recommendation for clarification of ordinance language and ease of review, and updating quantities of project review board submission materials.
Second.
Second.
Any additional thoughts, Caroline, or you're good?
No, I feel like I covered it, but again, happy to answer questions. There were more changes to the subdivision ordinance because it, it needed a lot more cleanup in the legal review.
Yep. Great. Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Moving on to item 06-25, to consider action relative to authorizing the submission of a community development block grant. I will read the be ordered. Be it ordered that the town manager be authorized to submit an economic development CD BG application to the Cumberland, to Cumberland County, as well as to provide other reasonable in-kind staff assistance to support United for Child Care at 2 Stonewood Drive in Freeport.
Hello, everybody. My name is Brett Richardson. I'm the development director here for the town, and it's a privilege to seek the council's approval to apply for a community development block grant on behalf of a great project here in Freeport that's really going to have regional significance. Child care, we hear a lot about affordable housing and the lack Childcare, we hear a lot about affordable housing and the lack thereof and the, and the pressure that puts on working families. But childcare and the lack of childcare supply is a very similar pressure point. If you've had kids recently, the cost of childcare can approach the cost of a mortgage. So it's a, it's a, it's a big burden, and a lot of that has to do with supply. And so this project is really an innovative public-private partnership between a subsidiary of United Way of Southern Maine, which is called United for Childcare, and the property owners at Two Stonewood. It's also, the partners have built a lot of support from local business community who recognize the fact that their employees need childcare. And it's been recognized that the lack of childcare actually reduces labor participation. And so if you've been around looking for a sandwich over the past couple of years or looking to get your car fixed, you've noticed that there's probably longer lines. And sometimes businesses that are typically open, you know, Monday through Sunday, sometimes aren't because they can't find workers. And part of that has to do with the lack of childcare support. And so this is a great project. We've had a chance to vet it with the county staff, and Cumberland County sees a lot of value in this. It's eligible. We put a pre-application in on December 12th that laid out the project. And the beauty of it is it not only creates jobs, 18 jobs that are going to pay workers higher than what the standard industry wage is. And again, those workers in often cases don't make a great living, and so they do frontline work with our children and not only, are not always compensated all that well. So this project's going to create 18 jobs that really go above and beyond in the wages. And then above and beyond that, it's also going to create 100 slots for kids right here in Freeport, but 50 of those are going to be eligible for state subsidy, which means they'll be offered to working families at a lower than market rate. So really a great project that solves an issue for workers and their families, also creates jobs in the community, and is a big need for local employers, and they're actually kicking in. If you had a chance to read the application in the, in the packet today, there are strong contributions from the local businesses, and the total project's about $1.2 million. The grant that we're asking for will be somewhere between 300 and 500. We're probably going to ask for a higher amount with the recognition that, that won't have a high percentage of being funded, but then we'll fall back to the 300. And we've had that conversation with county staff, and we can approach it that way. So a great project, and that one, that $300,000 that we're talking about with county money would be leveraged at least two or three to one with private investment. So a great project. We've talked with some other folks in the community, in the region, and they see a lot of value too. For example, some employers locally have workers that travel from all over the region. Westbrook in particular has a strong contribution to our workforce here, and they see, Westbrook sees value by creating supply here for workers that travel to Westbrook, it'd be, from Westbrook, it'd be a convenient location to and from work, and that then could free up some slots closer to home for other families in Westbrook. So it's really a regional significance that folks see a lot of value in, and hopefully we'll be successful.
Do you have a sense of the likelihood of success?
I, I think because we wanted a job creation grant, we know from county staff that only one job creation grant has been submitted in the last six years. A lot of times, CDBG funds go for community organizations or sidewalks. The program was created in the 60s from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and the funding has to go to support low to moderate income individuals or families. And so a lot of times grants go to other, other spaces. The beauty of this project is it's, it's an economic driver that in addition to that addresses social and community needs. So it's an exciting project. I, I feel good about it. I think we've got a great partnership. The partners are gathering letters of support from a variety of stakeholders that see value in this. So we're going to put our best foot forward, and I'm optimistic that we'll have a real good chance.
Can you talk a little bit about the in-kind and other financial support that the owner, the property owners are giving, as well as how this gets to sustainability once the fit-up is done? I'm assuming that that's what the initial capital is going to, is, is needed to, to get over that barrier, and then the sort of enrollment fees will, will cover the long-term sustainability of the center? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's exactly correct. We actually had a chance to visit the site with the grant coordinator for Cumberland County on, on the morning of December 30th. So we had a chance to walk that and have that conversation. And the space is a 10,000, plus or minus 10,000 square foot space that used to be office space for LL Bean. They've migrated to their new headquarters, and so that space has been vacant. The, the property owners have had some success putting another school in there, and so they're re, re, pivoting that, that property. But they see value in this, and they're, they see a lot of value from the community and their community stewards, and they've also, there's been a lot of good support from local businesses. So they see value in supporting the fit-up. The, the project needs plumbing. We're talking about having kids in there in a safe, clean environment that is also secure. So there's HVAC, there's electrical, there's communication, there's secure doors, there's a lot of that work to do. And I think because the property owners see value in this for the community, and also once it stood up and gets to, you know, pass break even, pass year two, and it's into year three and beyond, there's a huge demand for childcare. And that's, that's clearly not the issue. So as long as the operator is, is performing well, which they've done a great job with their business plan and embedded it carefully with stakeholders, they see a lot of value in that short-term investment in a long-term partner.
The, the business plan still calls long-term for the 100 kids, 50, split 50/50?
Yep.
I don't believe we got a second for that motion.
I second.
Oh, you did? Sorry, didn't hear you.
I just did.
Oh, thank you. All right, any other questions for Brett?
Excellent project.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah. Thank you.
We should have some clarity by, by March. That's when that review committee will go through. There's a public hearing that will participate. We may ask one or two of you to go speak on behalf of the project, so stay tuned.
Thank you. No other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. All right. Moving on to item 07-25, for the use of town property on April 19th, Counselor Egan.
Be it ordered that the use of town property requests by the Girl Scouts of America be approved, conditioned upon the town clerk's receipt of proof of appropriate insurance prior to the event.
Second. We need Chip. Background, was that you Brett?
Yep, that's me again. I've had a chance to work with the Girl Scouts of Maine. They have had this Earth Day-ish event in Freeport for a number of years. Traditionally, it's been held on the LL Bean campus, but because of the construction, that's been disrupted. And so they reached out to the town and said, we want a high-visibility location where we can bring in 500 people to your community. We'll put up a climbing wall for the kids. We'll have vendors that help educate visitors around environmental opportunities and issues in, locally here in Freeport and throughout the region. And they were excited about that. So we've worked with them. We had a meeting with the principal at the Girl Scouts and Chief Bernard from the Fire Department, and Paul Powers, Lieutenant Paul Powers from the Police Department, to make sure everybody was comfortable with the logistics and the safety. And we've moved along on that, and there's been a good discussion on the appropriate levels of staffing. So the project's been vetted. Everybody's excited about it. Code enforcement officers willing to sign off on it once, once you guys are comfortable with it. But they're going to bring 500 people into town. It's going to, it's going to be a nice event here right at the front of Town Hall, which is kind of a fun way to activate that. And we've clarified with Albert, the town, he was a town engineer, but the consultant, that's not going to interfere with the plan that Sophie laid out earlier. So that space will be available for public use, and the, the fit-up for the, the, the new public space will happen after that. So great opportunity, great location, high visibility. We happen to have some public art there that has to do with environmental opportunities, so it's kind of a nice little tie-in.
Is that, do you have any sense of why they chose this area?
Girl Scouts?
Yeah, is it because of the pinkies?
Uh, no, well, they've been coming for a while, and I think their, their original partner has been LL Bean, and so that outdoor connection, I think, is why they got used to Freeport. But they like it here. We want to keep them.
Yeah, just interesting decision for the parking lot right there.
Yeah. Can't miss it though, coming into town, you know?
Any thoughts?
Just a question, I fully support this and vote for it. Regarding the insurance amount, I thought we require more insurance from other groups. It might just be that we haven't updated this form in a while, but the Hilton there, it was a $2 million insurance policy.
I have not been involved with the Hilton. What I can tell you is, under the, the State of Maine tort claims act, our liability is $400,000. So we normally only ask people to cover our liability.
And in terms of the police detail and EMS, is that a cost they'll cover?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, that, that discussion was had. Everybody's comfortable with what the coverage will be and what the cost will be for the, for the user.
Just, you know, lessons learned.
Yep.
Is that something they've had to do before when they were at LL Bean, with police and EMS?
Um, you know, that's a good question. I, I don't know, because it was on private property to extent of it, but they didn't, they didn't bat an eyelash. They were comfortable with it. They were prepared.
I'm excited, I'll be there. I'll stop by.
Good.
Okay. Any other thoughts or questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So moving on to item 08-25, so this is to consider action relative to the recommendations of the Dog Bone Work Group. Who just read the last one?
Here on Matt.
Matt, Counselor Pillsbury, please read the be it ordered. A long one.
Yep. Be it ordered that the Dog Bone Work Group Transit Oriented Development Report to Town Council be endorsed as presented with recommendations implemented as follows. Number one, those related to land use regulations be referred to the planning board for consideration as a part of its 2025-2026 work plan. Two, those related to the creation of a transit-oriented development district be referred to town staff for further investigation and a presentation of scope, costs, and potential benefits to the town council by July 1, 2025. Three, authorize the town manager to revise the previously approved council item number 269-24, Maine Department of Transportation Planning Partnership Initiative scope to include the area included in the Dog Bone along Route 1 South, intersection of Route 1 and Desert Road to Main Beer Company, approximate. And four, include consideration of regulations and policy, financial, and operational work planning as appropriate.
Second.
Take it away Brett.
Thank you.
Need some water Brett?
It's nice to have them back-to-back, getting a little rhythm here. So what is this Dog Bone thing, and why is it called a Dog Bone? And that image is helpful. It's called a Dog Bone because really the shape and what it looks like. And what that represents is our downtown, south on Route 1, to roughly that Breeze Stop in front of Main Beer Company. And this represents transit-oriented development. So those circles, each of those circles up downtown, and then by Main Beer Company, represent a quarter-mile radius around a transit stop. And why it's a quarter mile is that that's considered a convenient walk for an average person that they're willing to make. It's a five-minute walk essentially. If they lived near there, they, they would feel comfortable walking that period of time to get on a bus or a train to move. So that's the idea, is to help folks navigate and use public transit and activate all the ideas that we've put together over the last 10 years, which we're going to talk a little bit about tonight. I'm happy to be here, but I'm really proud that we have a number of our work group members here. We've been working on this together over the last three months or so. If you want to change a slide there. It's, it's really a great team, and I, I commend the council for appointing these folks back in August, and then approving the work plan to move forward pretty expeditiously. But if you look at our membership, we've got two planning board members, Mitch Ruda and Wayne Jortner. We have the sustainability perspective included in this effort. The recent cap, Climate Action Plan that was approved, Mandy McPherson has represented that perspective on our work group. Counselor Benoit has liaised for the town council. Tony Whitney, Mary Davis is here tonight as the president of FEDC, but we have the economic development perspective embedded into this, this plan. And then Kim Tru, as well as Barbara Guffin, have represented the Complete Streets Committee and Connect Freeport. And then town staff, we've had, really excited to have Kyle Drexler on board, his participation and perspective, the assistant town manager Caroline, and myself. And so the real idea here is to make sure that we have a cross-section of perspectives, and that the plan that we put forward really advances the goals of all these, of all these groups. And really, so this was a slide that we kicked off our work group together, and it's important because, you know, are we trying to create something new here? We're, we're really not. What we're trying to do is pull together the ideas, goals, and consensus that's been developed in Freeport over the last decade. 2011, the comprehensive plan was passed, and that identified this Dog Bone area as a growth area. Following that, there was a, a good effort to put together an active living plan to help folks use active transportation, get out of cars and, and be more active, achieve health and, and fun by doing that. That was 2014. And then most recently, we had the Downtown Vision Plan, which we all know had a lot of consensus, a lot of great ideas about downtown housing, about economic vitality, about moving Freeport forward into a new chapter. And so this Dog Bone is, is not a new idea. We're not doing more planning. We're essentially combining these great ideas, and the geography that we just saw with that Dog Bone shape is a geography where all these ideas overlap. And so that's what we're trying to do, is meet everybody's needs and advance these goals that have been vetted for a long time. What's important to note is that what we're talking about in terms of land is about 2.5% of the total land in the town. So it's a relatively small amount of land that we're talking about. It just happens to be well-suited with infrastructure. It's a, it's a short bike ride or a walk to downtown, and it happens to be served by the Breeze Bus and then also the Down Easter Train Station. So it's a compact area, designated growth area in our current comprehensive plan. And I think based on what I saw from the planning board agenda for tomorrow night, the future land use meeting that took place at the, at the high school about a month or so ago, about identifying community input about where we want to grow, closely aligns with this geography. So that's, that was good to see, that we're, we're not plowing new ground here, we're just, we're just doubling down on what we already know we need to do. This is a really, I think, compelling map as well. That's that same geography, but it shows the parcels. And the color depicts how much, how much tax revenue each of those parcels contribute to our tax base. And so you can see the red downtown, that's Main Beer Company, not Main Beer Company, but LL Bean and some of the commercial properties up here on this end. And then if you follow that corridor down, the bright red spot down at the other end is Main Beer Company. So you can see these properties generate a lot of taxes for our community. But you can also see that within that 2.5% of our land in town that's well-suited by infrastructure, we also have a fair amount of vacant land that doesn't contribute as much. So depending on how we want to move forward, there is an opportunity to gain some efficiencies and to capture tax revenue without a lot of extensive cost to serve. So there's some efficiencies that we could capture here. The Dog Bone Work Group looked at a few different angles. We looked at, okay, how much, how much development could we, could we fit in here in a good way that's desirable to the community? We also looked at if we did develop this, this area, what would be the infrastructure that we would need to serve it, to make sure that we're not generating new traffic and issues, everybody's safe and happy, and that we're taking care of our environment? And then thirdly, we looked at the policy recommendations that would need to be updated in order to implement all of this. So the first swipe at it is what's the development potential in this area that we just saw? It's about 450 acres total. Using GIS and some other tools, we identified about 124 acres that are vacant, undeveloped. And then within that, looking at slopes and other constraints, we identified about 65 acres that likely could be developed. And so we did some modeling around that, and then the idea was that at full build-out, if we implemented all the policies that allowed density, and we did everything we could to condense all, all our development into that 2.5% of the land, that we could fit probably about 1,200 units. And then we, then we thought about, okay, but not every property owner's going to want to do a development project immediately. There's a timing component to this. And so we did some, some math and came up with about 705 units that seemed like a reasonable assumption over the next 10 to 20 years. So not tomorrow, not the next day, but over a reasonable timeframe, 10 to 20 years, we based our models on about 705 units. Of those, we had a nice mix, right? A big goal of the downtown- A big goal of the Downtown Vision, a big goal of the Ad Hoc Housing, Housing Task Force. I identified that most of the housing development that happens in Freeport are large, single-family homes on big lots on the outskirts. And that really what young people need, um, what folks who are looking to age in place and downsize from those larger houses, but stay in Freeport next to their neighbors and their friends, we need a greater diversity of units. And really what that means most of the time is smaller units. Um, so we looked at different opportunities to, to, to solve that issue and create opportunities for our young people to stay here and our elders to stay here. And so of that 705, we had about 43 single-family homes on small lots, um, about 208 small multi-family units, and then about 396 units that would be in larger multi-family projects. Uh, and this is relevant because all these numbers will, you'll see in, in a minute, if you have a chance to read the report, they feed into assumptions about fiscal impact and what it costs to serve these and what the revenues that they generate. Because we want to see good development, but we also want to make sure that we're taking care of our taxpayers and that we're being smart about the investment required to serve. Um, and so if you do 705 units over 10 to 20 years, that averages out to about 35 to 70 units a year, uh, which is very comparable to the traditional development that's happened in Freeport. The difference being down here is, as we'll see, the diversity of unit types on existing infrastructure, they have great economic impact, um, good tax fiscal impact, um, more people visiting our businesses downtown. Uh, it's environmentally sound because folks have the option to walk or bike and not have to get into a car. Um, and it supports healthy lifestyles and active transportation. So this type of unit mix has good benefits that are worth considering. Uh, and then the fiscal impact is, is, is pretty compelling, I believe. We had a workshop, uh, with the council at the end of last February, uh, where the Greater Portland Council of Governments, a consultant came in, uh, they had analyzed the town tax financial documents. They understood the cost per rev, uh, per resident based on our existing historical financials to run public service, to run the schools, to run town hall, to pave the roads, to do all of that stuff. And so they then assigned costs to these different types of units and, uh, what the revenues would be. And so that 705 units, based on that modeling at full build-out, would, uh, generate about, just about $1.7 million of new tax revenue a year. But the cost would only be, because it's on existing, on existing infrastructure, about $1 million a year. So we're talking about housing that solves community needs, adds to economic vitality, but also create, contributes a net benefit to the tax base, um, to the tune of about 37% goes to the bottom line that could be used for infrastructure or other needs. I'm almost done talking, and then when I'm done, we're going to turn it over to some of the work groups to share, uh, members to share their perspective. So, um, bear with me here for a little while longer. The other angle, now that we understand generally what the potential is for development and what the fiscal impact would be, great. But what's it going to cost to put the infrastructure in place, uh, to serve that? And so, uh, with FEDC support and partnership, uh, we had a, a study done by Woodard and Curran. Uh, we got information and GIS layers from CMP, uh, main natural gas, water, sewer, uh, town stormwater, and Woodard and Curran layered them all together and said, okay, this area is well-served, um, but we have a gap over here. And it would cost, because of the linear feat to put a sewer line there, the cost would be about X. So they, they modeled this out for us. Um, and the cost, the total cost would be about $22 million, uh, to fit this infrastructure up and to fully serve, um, this geography. Uh, because of partnerships that are available through DOT and, um, PACs around active transportation, uh, we, we baked into the model some matching funds, which we figure is, is pretty high level of confidence because of what we're doing. And so the town's share of that is about 15 million based on contributions coming from other places. So, you know, not, not a big deal. And you'll see, if you have a chance to read the report, and we'll see later, we then did some fiscal impact and stress tests to see, okay, if we did fund this based on these assumptions, what's the performance for the town? Um, and then we created a funding recipe based on that. And so how would we go about this? And so the work group, uh, it had some, had some perceptions about this and some sort of best practices is we want to see that new development covers the cost to serve that new development, right? We want to make sure if we're contributing kids to the school district, that revenue covers that. If we're adding traffic or adding amenities, that we have enough revenue to cover that. We don't want this new development to add costs for existing taxpayers. We want it to carry its own weight and also contribute more than, than what it costs. Um, and I'm confident that we can get there. We also have a couple of TIF districts that are expiring pretty soon. Uh, and because of, uh, some leadership at the state level, uh, we have an opportunity to renew those TIF districts, uh, at the original assessed value and keep the revenue flowing into new priorities every year. Um, the, those TIF revenues, this is kind of complex stuff, so I'll, I'll do my best. But I think, you know, if, if we move forward tonight, there'll be a lot more outreach to the community to talk about some of these things. This is not the end. This is really the starting point about promoting this opportunity for the community. Uh, but these TIF districts, LL Bean, Village Station, they expire in 2027. They currently generate about $865,000 a year in tax revenue. Uh, if we wanted to renew these TIF districts, we could capture that revenue and repurpose it in a, in a different direction, um, based on the council priorities. So the idea of this funding recipe is that we would renew these TIFs, we would use that revenue to fund the infrastructure. Um, we would dedicate revenue from new development to cover the costs of that development, uh, plus a little more. We want to make sure that we're putting, adding a little cushion to that to make sure if we have unforeseen costs, that we're prepared for that. And then finally, that we shelter a relatively small percentage of the new development into a TIF district that allows us to support good projects like affordable housing and other investments, um, that we're going to need to make. So this is a quick run-through through a big document, but I encourage you to take a look at it in greater detail, and we're happy to discuss the details with anybody at any time to make sure everybody's fully aware of it. Um, but this is the funding recipe. And then we did some fiscal, uh, stress tests. We said, okay, 700 units over X period of time, um, what, here's the revenue, here's the cost to serve, um, does this hold water? And we did it at 10-year increment, uh, if it took 10 years to build these units, we did it at 15 years to see if, if, uh, it would still hold water. Um, and then, uh, we did it 20 years. So if it was slower than how we've typically developed, and it happened, uh, you know, in a way that the revenue didn't accrue fast, as, as fast as it did if you did it in 10 years, would it still pay for itself? And we find that the 20-year stress test still is viable. Not only does it break even, it has a, a surplus there. So, um, we really wanted to look at this from a financial standpoint and making sure that we could communicate with you with a straight face that this isn't just rosy-colored glasses. This is a plan that's been vetted and thought about and, and taxpayers have been considered in it. So, um, that's the trust, uh, the stress test. And then we came up with some, uh, some policy recommendations around land use, infrastructure, and then, uh, funding and partnerships. And before we get into the details on that, it's important to remember that the Planning Board and the community is going through a, a comprehensive plan update. Uh, the town is currently overhauling the design review ordinance. Sophie mentioned earlier that we're going to be tackling the 602, the site plan, uh, work. So this isn't meant to, to, um, suppose those or, or brush them aside and put these to the front of the line. Um, but we do feel like some of these are pretty, we could move on these pretty quickly, and they would complement those longer-range plans that are being undertaken right now. So for land use, uh, in order to get that density that generates that positive net fiscal impact, we need to allow for more density. Right now, uh, in Village Commercial 1, the downtown, uh, you can have zero land per dwelling unit and base your project based on that, but throughout the rest of the district, it requires a lot of land, even to build a small studio for a, a single elderly person, it requires a lot of land. So we need to, to update our zoning to allow for more density, which allows for that greater diversity of unit types, smaller unit types that serve different types of households. Um, we want to designate the Dog Bone Geography as a priority development district in all these plans. Um, the DOT, they pay attention, uh, to, to what plans have been adopted and what plans have public support therefore. Um, PACs is going to care about whether or not this stuff has been vetted and whether or not we all agree to it. Um, so designating this, this plan and this geography as a primary investment area helps us go out there and build partnerships that bring resources to Freeport. Uh, infrastructure, we'd like to see an endorsement of that table of, of, uh, infrastructure investments, which we'll hear from Kim, includes bike ped amenities that allow people to move around safely, our kids to get to school without having to hop in a car, um, and, uh, have good stormwater and environmental protections. Uh, we also want to, and this is an important one, we want to fund and, uh, create a coordinated development design, um, where we look at the land around the Route 1 corridor and identify the places that are well-suited for development, the places that are well-suited for a trail corridor, um, and we map that out and we get ahead of it, and we work with, uh, other stakeholders to approach this in a coordinated way, so we don't lose opportunities. This, what's exciting about this is that, uh, we talked last time with, about the Maine DOT Planning Partnership Initiative scope of work. And, um, the reason that the motion references and grants the town manager the authority to update that scope of work is through conversations with the DOT. They see a lot of value in including the private coordinated development design with the Route 1 corridor plan. They want to see land use planning married with transportation planning. And so what that means is we can create this, this scope of work that would have cost, you know, roughly $75,000 for the town on its own, by baking into the PPI, which is a 50/50 cost share, the DOT will, will pay half of that. And then we also have a lot of integration between this planning efforts. And so we're not having, you know, the left hand not talking to the right hand. They'll, they'll be married together. So that's pretty exciting. Um, we want to refine the Dog Bone Tax Increment Financing Strategy that's embedded in the document, fully vet it, make sure that we're turning over every rock and every opportunity, and then move forward with applications to the state, which are required for approval to move forward on that. And then finally, we want to facilitate close coordination with state and regional partners to go after money. We want to, we want to bring resources to Freeport. And a lot of entities are thinking about transit-oriented development. Uh, Greater Portland Council of Governments is undertaking a reimagining Route 1 to think about how Route 1 behaves and performs from Kittery to Brunswick. Um, we want to be a, you know, a shining star within that effort and position ourselves to be, you know, the early adopter that gets some grant dollars and creates demonstration projects. So land use, infrastructure, infrastructure, funding and partnerships, and I think we've got some great partnerships in the room tonight, uh, for the work group members, and we're going to turn it over to them to, to hear their perspective on this plan. Thank you, guys.
Okay. So I'm Mitch Ruda. Besides being on the Dog Bone Work Group, I'm the vice chair of the Planning Board, and I've also worked closely with John Egan over the last year and a half on the Ad Hoc Housing Committee. I got involved in all of this specifically because I felt like the vitality of Freeport depends on housing downtown. I have a urban planning background, and I looked at our overbuilt, uh, retail space as an asset, a unique and special asset, and I could see that it is going to require housing downtown. And then I was involved in the Downtown Vision Plan, and you could see that evolve. Uh, so what you need to take from this report. First, first of all, Brett did an unbelievable amount of work, an unbelievable amount of work, and he in, brought in, uh, wide range of extra people. Uh, he'll know better, where is he? He knows better than me who helped him lay out the tables that did the stress tests. I was very concerned throughout the process about, well, what if they don't? And, uh, that's sort of what we were trying to play with, and there are stress tests that even show lower development than the 705, uh, that also seem sound. The next steps involve further due diligence. Check the math. Uh, I think they did a really thorough job, and we tried to look over it pretty carefully. Uh, but over the, the next steps will include double-checking the math, and if it's right, it's really makes a whole lot of sense. So I wanted to make this point, to maybe more to the public than to you guys, uh, which is that this is not another plan. Uh, this is an implementation proposal for how we make all the plans over 15 years. And, and Brett started with the point I'd sort of wanted to make, but he made it, that we've had 15 years of planning that have all pointed in the exact same direction, and nothing has really happened. And we, in fact, some of the things that have happened have discouraged development in the town. And so what, we need to figure out exactly how do we encourage it and encourage it in the right way? And so I wanted to remind you of this. Uh, the 2011 Comprehensive Plan called for concentrating residential development in growth areas and increasing the supply of more affordable dwelling units, something that has not happened in the time since. Uh, the 2025 Plan, which I'm in the middle of, uh, and being involved in, and we've listened to a lot of public feedback, will definitely support those same two things. Uh, the 2021 Vision Plan specifically asked for 1,500 people to live downtown and said that that was essential to, uh, the economic vitality of downtown of the retail and commercial establishments. And there's 300 people there today. The Climate Action Plan, which you just adopted, encourages the preservation of open lands and envisions a more walkable, bikeable Freeport with less reliance on cars. Uh, those goals precisely match the goals of this transit-oriented development, uh, which promotes development in a zone that's already well-served by infrastructure and transportation systems and envisions superior biking, walking, uh, along the corridor. Uh, the, which brings us to the Complete Streets Committee, which their work also precisely aligns with the Dog Bone idea. They have mapped out the infrastructure required to make a less auto-dependent Freeport. Uh, and they've been working closely with Main DOT, and they've attested that Main DOT is also completely aligned with this. And then finally, the Ad Hoc Housing Committee has documented the need for smaller, less expensive housing units that can accommodate more diverse and less car-dependent households. So, and the Dog Bone is the most logical place to put that. So in short, this is how we do something we have been talking about. And then, uh, I guess I made the point about the, the money, which is, I, I think the map, uh, I've spent a lot of time looking at it, but I don't feel like, I feel like, boy, that has to be double, triple-checked. But like, if you don't start the process right now, we'll never get it done. So let's hire the people that have double, triple-check it and get it done. I was talking to my, I'll sit down, but I was talking to my wife before, and she said, "So when is anything going to happen if this happens?" And I said, uh, well, you know, the, the, what I've learned in the three years I've been involved in Freeport, you know, uh, council stuff and Planning Board stuff is the wheels turn really slowly. And I thought, I don't know, two years? It'd take a year to make the zoning changes? And, uh, I'm, I'm on the Planning Board saying, "Why can't we go faster, faster? Because there's things that we should do." And have the conversations, yes or no, and move along.
I believe we have a couple more speakers.
Yeah, there was more.
I'm Wayne Jortner. I'm also on the Planning Board with Mitch. As one of, two of the, um, task force members from the Planning Board, I'll just make a brief comment, though of course I'm not speaking for the Planning Board, just as, you know, Mitch is not either. I just first want to say that I've never seen such easy and natural consensus among a group of people from all these diverse organizations. I mean, it was really incredible to have. There was so little that we disagreed upon, so this must be a great report, right? Because a bunch of smart people thought it was all, all good ideas, and I attribute a lot of that to Brett's, um, skill in bringing this together and the way he ran the process. It was very impressive. So one of the most striking facts we learned during this process is that there was once 1,500 people living in the downtown area, and now there's only 300 people. So it appears that parking lots and retail space has largely displaced that population. Given the consensus that this trend should be reversed for all of the reasons cited in the Dog Bone Report, I'd like to highlight one specific part of the report, and this might go to the way we could speed things up and make things not take another 10 years to move in this direction. I'd urge the council and the Planning Board, and I, and I do actually urge the Planning Board from time to time, to seriously address height limits. There's always been a tension between traditional values, traditional views, and, versus the benefits of density and the economics of development. In my view, the pendulum has swung much too far in the direction of tradition. This task force report does recommend relaxing current height limits, but of course, it leaves it to future determinations of this council and the planning leaves it to future determinations of this council and the Planning Board to quantify any such changes. But just a brief bit of research suggests to me that building height restrictions could account for a very large decrease in housing units and much less investment. I think it's consistent with the findings and the spirit of this task force report to suggest that we all start to think about reversing the pendulum and take meaningful action to address our affordable housing crisis. We need stronger development incentives, including more aggressive consideration of the relaxation of building height limits in appropriate locations. So 700 units may never come if it's not economical for builders to build it, and I think this is a key way to create those incentives. Thank you.
My name is Kim Tru, and I currently am on both the Connect Freeport Committee and the Town Committee of Complete Streets. Also, as an aside, my second career was working with the Bicycle Coalition of Maine, and I am passionate about biking. I'm passionate about economic development through biking and how communities can be strengthened. And it's certainly been proven throughout other places in the state, in the country, and in the world about what biking can do for a community. And so being a part of this plan, this Dog Bone Plan, has been really somewhat of a dream come true in terms of being able to, to work to bring the plans that have been done, worked on in the community through the Active Living Plan that was commissioned by the, the town back in 2014, the work that they've been done, that they have done since then with Complete Streets, actually working to approve different plans for putting in bike lanes and other things. And we've done a good job in small pieces to try and move a bigger plan forward. But this is the first time that I've seen where the town is really sitting down through this Dog Bone Committee to actually comprehensively look at what we can do in this area of the Dog Bone area, which is along Route 1, and then how all the other plans for bike lanes and multi-use paths and sidewalks can then be attached to that plan to make a more complete and connected community with streets that are safe for all of our vulnerable users throughout the, throughout the town. I see this as a, as a chance for the residents who have been clamoring for taking back the town, taking back the streets. There used to be a lot of casual biking and walking around the town, but the cars have really come to own the town. And it's time, particularly in a time where residents want more healthful activities, they want not to be dependent on cars because it's so expensive in order to be able to, to run a car. It costs on average of over $10,000 a year for each car that a family has. And so there's going to be another way to have the town be responsive to the community members who want to be community members and to feel that vitality of an active town where they see their fellow residents on the streets, on the sidewalks, in the bike lanes. So this plan, this vision captures that whole excitement that, that the community members want. It would allow residents of all ages and abilities to move safely around the two-mile stretch of Route 1 that goes through the heart of the town so that they can attend school and work, shop, visit the library, the post office, the town hall, restaurants, and other services without the need for getting into a car. And it allows for connectivity to the town's natural environments and neighboring communities. Building the infrastructure listed in the plan would also attract visitors and encourage them to stay in town longer. So the Dog Bone Plan provides a step-by-step plan to accomplish in an affordable manner the walkable, bikeable, vibrant, and sustainable community residents repeatedly have said that they want. And so I hope you agree with that, and will vote to support the recommendations set forth in the plan. Thank you.
I also know that Mandy from FSAB should have emailed councilors her, her thoughts on this as well. She was unable to be here tonight.
My name is Barbara Guffin, and I chair two committees in Freeport, the Complete Streets Committee and Connect Freeport. Both Complete Streets and Connect Freeport evolved out of the Freeport Active Living Plan that was commissioned by the Freeport Town Council in 2014 and adopted in 2015 as part of the town's efforts to improve the quality of life for Freeport's residents. Since 2015, the citizen group called Connect Freeport has been working to implement the Active Living's Plan vision of a connected network of trails, sidewalks, paths, and shoulders throughout town and into adjacent communities, allowing residents to safely get to work, school, and all other places. Connect Freeport advocates for a more connected community to encourage active modes of transportation and support the public health and economic prosperity of Freeport. The work of Connect Freeport, in conjunction with the Complete Streets Committee, which the Town Council authorized in December 2020, when it adopted the town's Complete Streets policy, has led to many positive changes that make it safer for children, families, and visitors alike to be active around town. A few of these changes include the completion of sidewalks in the downtown districts such as Elm Street and Snow Road, improved striping treatment of Route 1 from the Casco River Bridge to West Street, there's buffered line striping and bike sharrows, and reducing lane widths on South Freeport Road to increase shoulder width, which is how I got here tonight, walking along that road, to name a few. Connect Freeport also advocated to the Town Council for the adoption of a so-called Complete Streets policy, an approach to planning, designing, building, operating, and maintaining streets that enables safe access for all people who need to use them, including pedestrians, bicyclists, motorists, and transit riders of all ages and abilities. Connect Freeport members strongly support the recommendations proposed in the Dog Bone Work Group Report. We are particularly encouraged by the scope of commitment to active transportation infrastructure consistent with Connect Freeport's vision and the municipal vision of Freeport's Complete Streets Committee. No doubt there will be refinements and alterations as projects unfold, but the stated intent and demonstrated commitment to scope are most encouraging and have earned the support of Connect Freeport in this planning phase. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Brett, was that everybody?
I think that's it.
Great. Wonderful. I know we have some folks who are supporting, who are here to support it publicly. I want to give council a chance to ask questions. I do want to also state that there were some folks who had reached out during the process about, can we include this? Can we include that? Trying to kind of morph the scope a little bit. And I also want to be clear that if it's not involved or not included in the Dog Bone scope doesn't mean that it's not going to be a priority for the town moving forward, especially when it comes to the library and other, other well-used, well-loved amenities. This is almost a tool to unlock funding and potential to then expand beyond the Dog Bone. So I just want to be clear that the scope isn't the end-all, be-all of, of active transportation and economic development for the town. Questions? Go ahead, John.
I just want to start, I guess, with recognizing the amazing amount of work that the work group put together, including Councilwoman Knight, and the leadership provided by Brett. I mean, the presentation that we just saw was, you couldn't script a better presentation about how a community invests in its future. So excellent, excellent presentation. And I just want to reflect, I guess, the first thing that was bouncing around my mind listening to that in, in my day job, I work with a lot of different kinds of, of developers and community planners and municipalities in the goal towards more affordable housing, which is a somewhat narrow lane, but it involves a lot of these similar dynamics. And the key elements that I'm always talking about when I meet with municipalities and developers are to get at solving regulatory barriers, figuring out what's actually possible on the ground, in the site, and then working on how to pay for it. And this report hits all three of those in a really positive manner. So I think the most compelling thing here, which maybe went by with acronyms and discussions of, of different financing mechanisms, but that the TIF district itself carries its own water. So the discussion about spending 15 million on this, or 22 million on that, or $700,000 on this is, you know, if, if you're listening and you're hearing this, it could seem like, wow, where's all that money going to come from? The money comes from the activity that's inside the district, and it's going to come from the development projects that are going to show up at our door to say, "We want to be a part of this" because of all of the other benefits that are happening there. So I would, I, I would, I would really support the idea of the council at some point maybe attached to the efforts with the Dog Bone Group or, or something else, but really explain the benefits again, and maybe even several times, of why TIF districts are so powerful, so that we can demystify them for the general public who watch, you know, eight minutes of a council meeting a year and hear about $22 million and get nervous about what that tax bill is going to be. Because I really feel like that is sort of a, a disconnection between, you know, the stuff that we're talking fluently up here and, and what the general public might be thinking about. So I think we, we could do well to have a lot more simplified explanation of how TIF districts work and how important they are, and why this particular plan works so well because it is carried literally financially by the funds inside the TIF district and not by the general taxpayers.
And I think that's a, a point I heard several times during the presentation was, this isn't the end, if anything, this is the beginning of a lot more work. What this really does is provide sort of that direction and endorsement that this is what, this is the direction we want to move in. So I think you're right, there's a lot more education and outreach, that's iterative anyway, and I think this is just the beginning.
I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I think it's worth reiterating that there's a tremendous amount of work in here, and I think the town owes a lot of gratitude to the people who worked on this. It was amazing to me how much got done in how little time, right? I heard your first meeting was September or so, maybe October last year, and it's only January? That's amazing when you look at how long it took to do all the other plans that you referenced. And everybody I talked to, everybody tonight is kind of pointing in Brett's direction. So Brett, specifically, thank you for, for the leadership. There's an intense amount of information here, 49 pages worth of stuff. I don't disagree with any of it, I think it's all wonderful. I've only had it for a couple of days, which means the public's only had it for a couple of days. I would love for the public to be more aware of what we're doing. So the, the two areas that I have questions about, and I'm kind of looking to, to the council to see if anybody else has similar questions, is, one is, do we need more time for the public to be read in, to raise awareness, to say, "This is not just something that was brought to us, we rubber-stamped it, we moved along." Like, we want you to be involved, we want you to read all 49 pages, we want you to come and ask questions, or email Brett, or email us. So do we need to allow more time for that? And I'm not saying delay it six months, I'm saying, do we wait two weeks to approve it? Or do we say that the, what we're approving tonight is, allows for additional time for that to happen after? So I, I'm not taking a stand, I'm asking the question.
Yeah, and I think...
One more point that I'll make, and then I really do want to hear from you. I, I do have questions, like Mitch said, about the TIF. Like, there's stuff I want to dig into there, and not so much double-check the math, because I think the math is probably fine. But there are questions that I want to answer for myself so that I can get behind John's notion of saying, yeah, we, we kind of need to be the, the explainers of the TIF, and we need to get out there, and I think that's part of our job, to ask the questions, to make sure that residents understand how things work, and I want to be comfortable before I do that.
Yeah, and I think just two things I want to say in response to that is, you know, I think I'm always in favor of more public outreach and education, and also I do believe this is certainly the culmination of a lot of public outreach and communication through the Climate Action Plan and the Downtown Vision, and even folks reaching out to us as the Dog Bone Work Group. And also in terms of the, the TIF, I think we could, we, we could endorse this and also do more TIF education. I don't think the education piece and the outreach piece needs to necessarily hold this back. And I think, you know, if we look at the action number two on the Be It Ordered, it's really giving direction to staff to start the process of investigating, renewing it, not necessarily renewing it. So there's still sort of a buffer period put in there that I think some of the education could happen in that timeframe, so.
So I just want to be clear with the, having staff investigate, the way I would see that play out is knowing that you want to go in this direction, knowing what the Dog Bone Work Group Report says, I think we now have an ability to be a little bit more proactive with the Department of Community and Economic Development regarding what it would be allowed or not allowed, and what value we can pick up and/or what we have to shed in a TIF district. So it's about, we're trying to navigate a very slippery, a very new path that many communities are racing to try to, to take advantage of, but nobody's actually gone through all the steps yet. So that's going to incur cost to do that. The other piece is, you know, once we know in general what's allowed, I would think we would want some general vision or thoughts that we could put on paper to then get Freeport Economic Development Corporation's, FEDC's recommendations on. If you remember in your TIF policy, there is a whole, it goes to FEDC for recommendation before it comes back to council. But before I would be comfortable sending this out, I would want some general thought put into it so they know what they're bringing recommendations back, because it's not a formal development, like a CEA.
Yeah, I think it's important to be clear about, if, if we're voting on this night, what we're actually doing, which I think, I appreciate your point, Dan, in, in not just saying, oh, yes, this is all ready to go, but the, the very specific four pieces of what we're being asked to do are to send to the Planning Board the things that the Planning Board needs to take from this, which will involve its own public process, public hearings, all of those things, directs the staff to do that investigation and bring it back to us related to the, the district, and really just to keep the momentum going of, I think, the, the work that needs to be done within the elected representation and appointed representation, and as, as well as the staff. So I don't think we're, we're locked into anything by approving it any more than we're just trying to keep the speed up that you were just acknowledging is remarkable for Freeport.
Yeah.
So not to belabor the point, really impressed with what the committee's done. This is exactly what I was hoping to see as part of the charge when we, when we did this in the summer. It's obvious a lot of work. Immense thanks to, to you, Brad, and the committee, and everybody who worked on it, whether or not they sat formally on the committee or not. This gives us a real leg up to attack this problem. So I really appreciate that. Talking about, to Dan's point, I mean, I, I see these four items as allowing us to move forward, it doesn't lock us in, but your point's well-taken in that I think we should set the timeline for what we expect to come back and when we expect to come back so that we can set public hearings or just discussions or workshops around what is a TIF, how does it work, what the details and the nuts and bolts are. So we can, we can keep the momentum going, but we can also have public, another level of public engagement, like that'd be really important. So, I mean, you guys did all this work in four months, I don't see why we can't come back in four weeks with all the next step, right? No, I mean, in all seriousness, I, I think we should look at, you know...
That was accepted.
Well, no, I, I think to do our due diligence, we're probably looking after, after budget season, you know, if we're looking at like the May timeline, I, I think that's probably pretty realistic, but I would defer to staff and the committee on what, when they can come back with the next steps. come back with the next steps. I do have a couple questions as to the plan, if you don't mind. So in looking at it, and these might be just two in the weeds yet, so cut me off if it is, but when you're looking at the projected annual tax revenue with the 67% buildout, you've listed some, like, a sample buildout, right? Does that, does the implied annual tax number of the 1.7 million change if you, if you change the affordability and the unit size of those, of the builds that you listed? So, right, because I'm looking at, and the only reason I draw that question is, there's only one that's labeled affordable, and I'm just wondering what the, what the right mix is, and what impact that might have on the implied annual tax, because that'll help drive the cash flow to support the 10, 15, or 20-year buildout, right? So like, I'm just wondering if there's a level of detail that the committee looked at, or you crunched in the, in the stress testing? That's one question. And then, and then two, in terms of the actual planning, and looking at like a 10, 15, or 20-year buildout, did you look at it just comprehensively, like, if we take 705 units, this is what we're going to build, this will be the cost, this will be the infrastructure cost? Or did you look at it sort of on a yearly cash flow basis in terms of what the TIF will bring in, what incentives we may have to do, what, when we have to do the infrastructure process, and who's going to float the difference in the interim? Or is that the next level of the planning and sort of stress testing?
It's a great, great question. We'll start with the first one, the unit mix and how we got to those numbers. So behind this, those tables that you see in the report are snapshots from a spreadsheet that has multiple tabs, based on the GP-COG fiscal impact analysis that was recommended by FEDC a couple of years ago, as soon as I arrived in town, which I'd be happy to share with you. Mitch and I have worked through it, we've worked through it, the work group, but it's a model that extrapolates from that. And the assessor set the values for these type of unit types, and we used a mix of those that are sort of a range that are representative, right? It doesn't mean that we couldn't create a new tab for a different type of project and model that out using the assessor's numbers.
But if you tip them downward, you get less money, but not by much, I think is the answer.
Yeah, just curious what the range might be.
I don't know if we modeled it out, like, if you had four down there, then...
You could, we could, yeah, it'd be easy to...
The spreadsheet works.
Yeah, it's a, you'd have fun with it, actually.
Yeah, no, I'd love to see it.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. So, so these numbers were, you know, vetted by the, by the assessor, and then extrapolated out there with a representative range. And we can, we can work through that together to answer your questions, and we could run different scenarios. That's the beauty of that, is that this tool allows us to run infinite scenarios, we could change the unit, the unit type and the unit mix. And then the second question, having to do with the, sort of the cash flow implication, I think, of all of this, the beauty of the renewal of the existing TIFs that are about to expire, is that is revenue that accrues every year. It's almost as if, you know, from a business standpoint, let's say you built a new piece of equipment, and you had to build the widgets that go through that to create the revenue to fund it. In this case, we've got the cash flow already accruing, it would just be devoting it to a different use. And that's a question, to the work group's credit, that they pushed on a lot, was, okay, what if this doesn't happen? Or what if it doesn't happen fast enough? The risk to the town is relatively minimal, because we're using revenue that already exists. And then the new projects create the upside that allows us to invest more, or lower the tax, the mill rate, or do other things. So it's based on a pretty conservative model that we've, if I was a banker, you know, we've already got the revenues accruing, we know that the district's going to expire in 2027. To Sophie's point, we've got to work through the process with DECD, and, you know, probably a TIF attorney, and really make sure that we're maximizing the opportunity. But there's $865,000 this year that are going to, that accrue from the two TIFs that are going to expire in 2027. And then what we haven't talked about is, in 2029, the destination Freeport TIFs are going to expire, and that's the hotels on Route 1 South. And that's another close to $300,000 a year that would become, come into play. Whether we need it, want it, that's a different question, but it's there, and it's already based on projects on the ground. So the risk, we're not like, we're not taking on debt to buy the equipment to push the widgets through, we've got the cash flow to buy the equipment, and then everything else after that is just simple operating costs, which, that's why that model's based on the operating costs. So it's bankable.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Can I just follow up on that? And this is my question about the TIF. We have $865,000 in revenue that's already accruing as part of the TIF, and if we renew the TIF, then we restrict that revenue for the use that we identify for infrastructure or whatever else.
Yep.
If we don't renew the TIF, we still have that $865,000 in revenue, it just goes into the general fund, from which we could decide to invest in infrastructure, or we could say, well, yeah, we need some infrastructure, but we also need a new fire truck, or whatever it is. So renewing the TIF restricts the revenue. Not renewing the TIF has the same revenue, but it's less restrictive.
So I'm going to push back on that just a little bit, because if you take that 845,000 times 35 cents on the dollar, what stays with the town is 295,750 of that.
What's the 35 cents on the dollar?
So the rest goes to RSU 5, and reduces our state subsidy.
I thought we were already capped out, and we're at the minimum amount we're going to get.
Or it goes to RSU 5, because we're, we are required, we're a minimum, we are required to have a certain mill rate contribution, and it goes to the county. And, yeah, to the county, to Cumberland County. So with a TIF district, we keep 100 pennies on every dollar that we tax, when, but the trade-off for that is, we are then, we can't use those funds the same way we would use other tax dollars. If you allow it to turn into general fund revenue, it's going to impact our revenue sharing, our revenue sharing will go down, our school bill will go up, and our county tax will go up.
And just to add on to that great explanation, I think Sophie alluded to it earlier in terms of, you know, the next step on the TIF is to fully understand exactly what's eligible and what's not. And, you know, if we have new development that requires public safety enhancements, you know, one of the, one of the things that we'll lobby for is that part of the development program makes that an eligible expense, so that we try to create that development program as broad and as flexible as we can to get at what you're, you know, it's a good point, Dan, and that's what, we just got to work through that process to maintain that flexibility while still capturing the upside that Sophie just laid out.
Other thoughts or questions?
The last thing I'll say, I'm sorry if you guys want to...
No, go for it, Brett.
Is I think the real upside to taking a stance tonight is that it allows us to promote this to the development committee, or community, folks who are looking at Freeport. It sends a signal that we're serious about this. It sends a signal to the main Department of Transportation that we're serious about this, and we can push forward on that scope of work with the PPI. And it also, you know, there's a commitment from me, and I assume from the passionate work group members that we've heard from tonight, that, you know, available to do any kind of community meetings, any kind of public outreach, any kind of spreadsheet, walk through, run some scenarios, and make sure that we're building support, because as the council chair said, this is just the beginning. And for this to be durable, we got to maintain public support, and that's continued outreach and education, and we're committed to carrying that forward.
And I just want to close that loop as well of, you know, that's my favorite idea ever, is the timeline and deliverables and what we can expect and win. And it seems like Brett and Sophie, maybe you can work on that and bring that back to council, so we can just keep this conversation going and kind of keep our finger on it. Okay, so we are, we have a motion on the table to endorse the recommendations implemented as follows. All those in favor?
Aye.
Well done, Brett.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
I will just say, I had a lot of fun on that, on that committee. Mitch, you bring great energy to a room, so thank you. Thanks.
You're running this.
Thanks.
There were a number of times when I felt that clapping might actually be in order.
Truly, yeah.
Through the night.
All right, another fun item. So to fill, sorry, I'm just so excited, I have to regroup myself for a second. So we did have item 279-24 was tabled, I think we're ready now to bring it to the dais and have a conversation about it.
You're on Dan, I think.
What? Are we good?
Yeah, I was saying you're on Dan to read it.
Oh, thank you. I actually asked John to read this one for me, so if you could read the Be It Ordered.
Read that into the record. Be it ordered that the individual Anna Child be appointed to fill the vacant seat on the RSU 5 Board of Directors until the next annual municipal election.
Second.
I can just say that the last, well, last fall, two weeks ago, was last fall, the Appointments Committee interviewed three candidates that self-selected to be nominated for this open position on the RSU Board, right after the November election, a member of the school board, or right before, maybe, had to withdraw and resign. So our charter allows the council to appoint a refilled position, so to speak, until the next election, when that candidate would then, or that incumbent would then run under the normal terms. So the Appointments Committee interviewed three folks, very strong candidates. We checked in with both the school board and the school superintendent to get some feedback. The feedback was almost exactly the same, which is, we're looking for somebody who has strong commitment to all the children in the entire district. And all three candidates had that. So we went through a process, and we selected someone who then withdrew, and, and very quickly were able to resolve to nominate Anna Child for the position.
That's great, and I think it's a great sign that we had three stellar candidates come up self-selected, so that's wonderful.
Question, do you have a last question?
Yeah, sure.
Is it Anna Child?
Yes.
C-H-I-L-D, Child? Okay, so Janice Flynn, District 4, Freeport. I don't understand what the process is. I mean, I saw in, obscurely, in the minutes from a school board meeting, vacant position, and then, you know, there's nothing else. So, I mean, I just heard all this talk in the past segment about notification, input from the community.
Yeah.
I haven't been asked for my feedback, this is an elected position, I mean, there's no...
So this is, this is, this is, yeah, so this is interim, because we had somebody who had resigned, and so basically, council has the authority and the obligation to appoint somebody until the next election.
But why, why doesn't the community, isn't the community allowed to, to apply for, or...
Absolutely, yeah.
Put in suggestions about who could, I mean, because this is, this is still an elected position, correct?
Oh, absolutely, yes, yeah.
So, I mean, I know that in Durham, when somebody stepped down, they had a special election, or they had a, the community was informed that there was a process taking place. I don't, I don't see any of that.
Yeah, and I do want to sort of give Sophie and her team the credit here, it was posted on social media, I believe, I saw it in a couple emails, I saw it a few different places.
It was in the BDMs and the news.
It was in the news as well. So there was outreach, I mean, of course, we can't reach everybody all the time, and there's always room for improvement, but it certainly was put out there, that this was, we were looking to fill this position. And I will say that, instead of calling a special election, which can be kind of costly and timely and a bit of a pain, you know, this, if Anna Child's, you know, she wants to run, she can, otherwise, you know, it's a very short-term term.
I also want to be very clear that this is what the state laws require, this isn't just a choice. And I, I will say that it was on social media, it was announced at council meetings, it was in newspapers, it was on the website.
She stepped down in October, after the holidays, really, I can't, you tabled it once, I don't see that that's a lot of time for a position.
I will say that we want a full board, so two months, you know, we want to get somebody in that seat as soon as possible to make sure that, you know, we have proper governance for these institutions, so. Okay, so I think we have the motion on the table. Any other questions or thoughts? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
I do thank you for your feedback, though I do, you know, constantly always trying to think about how we can improve communication and outreach, for sure. So that is, moving on to our seventh order of business, which is public comment for items not on the agenda for virtual attendees. Do we see any hands?
No.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to other business. So other business number one is the goal-setting workshop. So, thank you all, I think we have landed on January 14th, so next Tuesday will be our goal-setting workshop. And we are officially switching it to the library, so we'll get a change of scenery, and we will not be sitting up here on the dais, so that should be good.
And I think because it wasn't appropriate for pastries, that we committed to soup and sandwich fixings, so come with an appetite, if you so choose.
Yeah.
John will be there.
So, and I also, that's a good question for allergies or dietary restrictions, let Sophie know.
Yeah, just let me know in the next couple of days, because I'm, you're trusting me to make this, I'm just saying.
What time?
Six. Six o'clock, still the same time, yep, for sure, at the library. And, you know, I think, I had this grand vision of having, like, pre-work and coming to show up with ideas already flowing, I decided not to overthink it, so I think we'll have it be a pretty casual, facilitated, self-regulated conversation. I think with this council, that makes sense, because I do think there's a lot of common ideas around where our goal should be, so I hope that is the case when we meet next Tuesday. And if there's any other suggestions, please let me know. Great. Anything else you wanted to say about that? Is there anything you need for that workshop?
If anybody expects any special supply, butcher block paper, sticky notes, dots, let me know this week, please, so that I can make my little run to, well, I'm probably not going to make the run to Sam's, but I'll ask somebody to.
I think we will need...
Flip chart and a couple of markers would be great.
And I think stickies, dots, we love dots here in Freeport.
We should have the regular subscription being renewed at any time, so.
Okay, so that's great. And then next, I wanted to talk through evaluating our manager, my timeline right here, okay. So I was working, I've been working with Courtney Sparks, Director of HR here in the town. So by the end of next week, you have a little bit of a timeline here, so the end of next week, you will receive a packet from me that will involve the evaluation tool for evaluating Sophie, Sophie's self-assessment of what she thinks she's accomplished over her time here in Freeport. We're also going to include her original position description, and through conversation with Sophie and Courtney, we are going to include a draft new description that is more, that reflects best practices and actual duties that Sophie feels she, she does.
There's nothing bad, per se, about the existing job description, and I will admit, I read it before I was hired, but hadn't really spent a ton of time with it since. When we pulled it out, there's a recapitulation of Chapter 2, which, if you look at ICMA and the Tenants for Management, I think it could be a little bit broader, which would also, you would hold me to a lot more stuff that way, as opposed to just what the ordinance says.
We also have a deputy manager, which we didn't have in that description.
Yes, yes.
So I think it's due for an update in general, but as to not sort of hold up this evaluation process, a draft will be included in this packet for the evaluation that we can put on the agenda in an upcoming meeting for discussion and approval.
Okay, yeah, I... Okay, yeah, I was just going to say I might recommend a very small committee to finalize that job description, or else we'll be talking about it till July if it's the seven of us.
Okay, yeah.
I'll show a draft, y'all can do the work.
Yeah, we'll bring it, we'll bring a draft and see how that goes, I think. So at the same time, Courtney will sort of deploy a tool for department heads and staff, so we'll have kind of both sides there evaluating Sophie. And you're not nervous at all, you've been cool as a cucumber this whole time, so.
So I'm cool as a cucumber, because my assumption is if there was a problem, I would have heard about it by now. I mean, that's just my assumption, so.
Yeah. And then, so hopefully the timeline is, that gives us enough time for evaluation materials to be returned to Eric and I for the 28th, so we can sort of do a report and look for themes and kind of understand what's going on there. And Sophie has asked for the opportunity to sort of talk with all of council, so that might look like an executive session at some point.
Can you just explain, high level, like what the tool looks like and what you're expecting from us, and then what's going to happen once you get everyone's feedback?
Yeah, absolutely, good question. So the tool that we found is actually from a best practice resource that Sophie and Courtney have both utilized. It's basically ranking core competencies and providing comment feedback. I would think it's pretty standard to forms we've all been familiar with.
Is there any, do we need any calibration to be able to do it correctly?
I didn't think that through.
Is that included in the instrument, the sort of indication of what those rankings are?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Is that what you, is that what you're looking at?
You have me at it.
What was that? You're looking for clarification about what each of the rankings means?
Like one is great, five is?
So that there's, I'll just pick on Dan. So Dan may be a really hard reviewer, I may be very easy, and you'll look at the two assessments and you'll say, this looks like two different people. But meanwhile, we generally have the same idea. Like, I may never give a five, but, so I just, so that it makes it easier and it's more clear, and it also sets a good baseline for reviews, because you, you know.
So you're basically saying if there's a scale where I'm, you know, it's, one means does not meet expectations, two means?
So I hear exactly what you're saying, which is why we tend to use the vernacular here, at least I've been with your senior team, that it either meets the standard, it doesn't meet the standard, it needs improvement, or it exceeds the standard. And there's some language in there about exceeding, meaning not just once, but is kind of where it lands consistently. And then there's the fourth, the fourth that we use is have observed it, because there are some things in there that you probably haven't observed, or don't have a mechanism to be able to evaluate. And then each of those sections, you evaluate it, but then there's also an opportunity to write your comments in, which is where you can say things like, you know, she, in general, she does a great job, however, here, here are two things that I really wish she would, you know, be more consistent with her weekly reports, and have material in front of council, more full material in front of council. Or we brought to her attention that material was lacking coming to council, and she, she addressed that, so she meets the standard and we appreciate how quickly she addressed that. At the end of the day, the evaluation really serves two purposes, right? The first one is in professional development, and this position is kind of unique in that I serve at the pleasure of the town council, and it's important that we're all rowing in the same direction. So this is an evaluate, an opportunity for us to kind of codify if there are things that we want changed, and it's, that's why I want to sit with the whole council and not just the council chair when you're done with the evaluation, so that we understand specifically what's working and what's, what we want to, what, if something's not working, we know, and, and how we want to change it. But also, what's the, what's the most important things? What are the most important things moving forward? So there's that relationship piece, and the evaluation is kind of the vehicle to get to that sitting down and having a candid conversation, right? And then the second one is around legal things. So for me, it's a little bit different than other employees. Every other employee that works for us is a just, is a just cause employee, where I am not. So a just cause employee, you have to have a body of work to decide unilaterally to separate the employment. But with everybody else, so if you were to separate my employment unilaterally without cause, that costs the town money, right? So it's always good to build, and we, we operate here on this idea of progressive discipline and good communication and development. So this is the opportunity from a legal standpoint to put all of that in writing, because if you tell me for three years in a row that I'm always late coming to council meetings, and it needs to stop, and I don't do it, and finally you get really irritated by that, you're building a case, and I think it's important that we have that. The hope is that once I hear it from you, I won't do it anymore, right? But, so for me, there are people who will never give extraordinary numbers, and then there are other people who will only give fives. And so I'm not interested in the one through five litmus. It's, are there prob, does there areas that need improvement? And if they are, you better say why. Does it meet the standard? And if it exceeds the standard, you should, probably should point out how, so it keeps happening.
But I think that is a good point, that maybe with Courtney, she could provide some sort of.
Yep.
Scale like that.
It's right in the, yeah.
I think it is, isn't it?
Well.
And that will be consistent with what staff is doing as well, yeah.
And the other piece of this that you will have, before you finalize your evaluation, there is a, a tool that's quite brief, very concise, but goes to my direct reports and then the deputies or other department heads that are supervised by Brett and Caroline, to just talk about, am I accessible, do I support, do I give them the tools they need, that kind of, if they bring, can they bring issues to me, and if not, why, kind of thing.
One of the other things that leadership has discussed that I'm particularly interested, that goes a little bit, I think, to the point you're raising, Matt, too, is integration of the feedback, because as Sophie was just saying, it's the entire council that is evaluating her and, and holding her to account, it's not individual counselors. So we want to be looking for outliers, because it may be that one of you has interesting insights that nobody else has picked up on, and we want to listen to that, but we also don't want one individual evaluator to skew an entire evaluation when maybe that is not a concern for, for most of the councils. So I think there'll be some work to pull that together, and it may mean that we also are doing some outreach to follow up with you to ask some more questions, if there's something that is, doesn't seem to align with what other evaluators have, have put down.
Good question for you on the process. I get that you're looking for feedback on the, how well the metric has been, the standard has been met. Are you also looking for feedback on what the standards are? Which standards we're using to evaluate?
Well, I think that's kind of the call to action for the updated position description, because I feel like that would be sort of the beacon that we would refer to, but that's not necessarily the most reliable piece of data right now. So all that to say is yes, but I think that's part of updating the position description.
So there's a, I can't think of any, I'm sure the ones that you put forward are going to be fine, but if there's a standard that we feel strongly about including, we can suggest it.
Absolutely, and I think there's, you know, there's always the other comments section.
Yeah, you can always find a way to get it in, okay.
Great. So our timeline right now, pending unforeseen circumstances, is end of, end of next week, you'll see that in your inbox.
And you need it back by the 28th?
28th, yeah. Okay, I think that's it, John?
Make a motion when you adjourn.
Yes, I second that, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are done.